Good evening, everyone. And welcome residents, whether you may be watching. This is a Zoom meeting. It's also a public meeting being called a cable broadcast and internet posting on www.biden-maskrout.com and YouTube. Zoom meeting number 885-7556-4036. Zoom meeting passcode 290-672. Zoom dialing number 1929-205-6099. I'll follow me in the bar, it's at the 604. And for everyone to extend the mic. Congratulations to the United States of America into the Republic of which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yes, the President for the Board of Health, since we're already doing this, Mr. Matt Kanas, Governor Bernardo. First order of business, number three would be executive session, press and all matters on the Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, states its powers to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health rather than professional competence of an individual for the suspension or dismissal of complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individuals. But entertaining the motion is time to adjourn to executive session in the Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A. So, second. And motion is made. Second is, we're going to go through the discussion. Seeing that was in favor of Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Kanas.
Aye.
Mr. Fires is also in favor.
I will also make the can motion to go into executive order for the Board of Selecting. We will not be returning back until open session.
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the Board of Selecting enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Number 1, as listed on the Board of Health orders for actions in general this meeting.
Second. Second. Any discussion? If not, so we'll call both, Sutton Hill.
Aye.
Sutton's about us.
Aye.
And Ken Tichos.
Aye.
Like I said, we're not going back until session.
I guess that part, like, if the Board of Health will be going back into competitive session. So, we are. Welcome back, everybody. We're ready for the session now at 7:22. We just had a final recess out of our executive session. So, we're moving on to new business, number eight. Our area, we discussed that limited application of site and sales of marijuana products at 200 Williams Street. I think we have our representatives tonight on the facility. Who wants to begin this session? And if you would, just pick your name, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair. My name is Valerio Romano. I'm the attorney for marijuana connection. Thank you for your time this evening. So, I believe we've submitted, I think we've had one last piece in there. I think we submitted what's generally a compliant application that satisfy all the issues of the local licensing fees for the Board of Health. I think there was one outstanding document that we brought, the original version.
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did, we have it. And then, other than that, I don't know if you like the update as to what the status is with the project.
Yeah, I would.
Yeah, but.
Just kind of an overview of what we've been doing.
Sure. So, originally, and this hasn't changed, originally, in the day, a bunch of you guys, the town, some years ago, we came for, it's been a long time. We came for, originally, the medical marijuana use. And medical marijuana is required vertical integration, use cultivation, product manufacturing, and dispensing in the same company. And then, the voters passed the adult use. And that went into effect a couple of few years later. And when we came, we added adult use retail, which is not requiring vertical integration. We've been awarded special permits in Site and Central Pool, so special permits for both the medical and adult use and Site and Central Pool for the project. We stalled for a little while, started thinking it could be challenging. And then, the Fonskas, you know, got out about our project, and they became part of it. And with Mike sort of steering the ship on construction, and I'm joined by Lisa Fonska, Mike Fonska, and Don Rader. With Mike steering the ship on construction, things have moved at a rapid pace. We hope to, and so, starting out, the primary use that was starting out is adult use retail, the recreational dispensing. And hopefully, that will be up and running in just a few months, probably six weeks after we get our certificate of occupancy, depending on how close that is to a vote from the Cannabis Control Commission, we may be up and running. And then, it may take a little longer than that. The commission can be slow on getting on the agenda and coming out for inspections and whatnot. But that's where we're at, you know? Construction is just ripping right through. And so, we're just looking forward to getting opening, finally, you know, hiring people, and we're back to the town. That's where we're at.
Yeah, and I scored on getting the documents, so we didn't want a whole job.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And then, if maybe through the court.
Yes.
Yeah, of course.
When do you anticipate construction being planned on?
Good evening. My name is Michael Fonska. I'm a lawyer. So, I should, I'm painting the interior Monday, Tuesday. You know, dry corruption is going next week. Finished shop, three stocks at the end of the week. I would think the interior would be done within about two and a half weeks from where we are right now. The exterior, we're just dealing with the underground electric. I would think within three weeks, we should be done. Asphalt in, aren't done, inspections, ready to go. You know, inspections are always an issue. Sometimes we have to wait, so. But we're very, 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 very close right now. I know the construction company does this, so they're my guys. So, we'll push everybody.
Unfortunately, with the Cannabis Control Commission into the chair, you can't apply for the next level of inspection until you have the certificate of occupancy in hand. They won't even come out, they won't even schedule. So, you know, and so.
Oh, you haven't had an inspection yet.
We have. Well, we have, we got a provisional license. So, we're licensed, but not with the final license that is required. And you can't apply for the inspection for that final license until you have the CBO. It's just the way they are, so that's sort of, that's kind of the way. Otherwise, we got to go out right now. It used to be they would come out and give you a punch list, make sure you got all of done, and then come back out a few weeks, we're ready to go. They don't do that anymore.
I apologize. You came up and introduced yourself. I had Thomas Fires, Matt Kanas, Governor Bernardo. You know everybody else here, I think.
Yes, for those parts of everyone.
Did you want to ask something?
I did.
Okay.
So, in your answer, you mostly mentioned, actually, only mentioned recreational cannabis. Will the medical side, the open, at the same time, the recreational side will be open?
Yeah, so, no. But I talked about briefly, but no, because in Massachusetts, medical cannabis requires this vertical integration. So, you have to build out your grow, your product manufacturing. And, you know, the grow is going to be two and a half million dollars, even with Mike and his own team doing. You know, and so, if we wanted to get the retail first, have somebody come coming into us and to the town, and then we'll get the medical. Yeah, absolutely.
Any thoughts, I was wondering, do you think medical's more important, you don't know? Any ballpark timeframe when might be able to be looking to reduce the medical side?
So, as soon as the front, the dispensary is open. Starting on the back, I have, actually, I have the same architect who designed the front for me. We started on the back phase right now, architectural whites. My plans are to be open eight months after the dispensary opens.
Okay. That's, I don't know if you're looking to fight years out.
You know, honestly, I'm dealing with possibly to have to be integrated. So, we're thinking about possibly maybe just getting one room open, and then integrate with you go. So, we're looking at a couple of different things right now, so I can expedite that and get the medical going. We have to sell, there's a certain percentage of what we grow on the medical side has to be sold for medical. It can't be sold in recreation. So, we have percentages with the state we have to play with too. So, that's what we're with the architect right now. Let's see if it's possible to open a smaller section, and I can get this done in a matter of months, but I don't have any answer yet. About within eight months, we should be, we should be good.
Unfortunately, Massachusetts is really, the commission is like killing the medical. There's absolutely no reason for medical to be required vertical integration. It makes absolutely no sense. You know, medical is also 10 times more in annual renewal fees to the state. Go figure. You know, it absolutely makes no sense, you know? And I think it's largely due to the political influence of the very first medical dispensaries open, like protectionism, that because everybody and their brother has petitioned the commission to remove vertical integration requirement for medical and to bring the renewal fees in line with adult use. But they just haven't. And, you know, and so, it just, but every place should have, you know, a medical component to it. But it's just something to do with the way the commission is working.
I have additional questions. What is the size of the facility on the whole buildup? And is it sewer or septic?
It's septic, Title V has been sold. Size of the facility is 18,700 square feet. The dispensary front is approximately 3,000 square feet, about 2,700 rest of the whole road.
So, the design flow is for the whole project, right?
Yes.
So, we're calculating the whole thing, right?
Yeah, they actually have a retail office in, like, what we call like warehouse.
Just wanted to make sure, because sometimes little things like that fall through the crap. We can find out, oh, my God, we're still building on, we don't have enough design flow for it.
Security panel, so you know, with you.
Yeah, I'll tell you.
Sorry, I didn't feel surprised.
Yeah, I looked it over, it's very good. It's long. They cover the bases, everything. So, there were a couple of things that we, I talked to Don this week, a couple of questions we're concerned about, nothing big. So, we're going to be prepared next week in, I believe, the end of security, yeah? And go with a few things, but I'll tell you, they cover everything, it's very good.
Thanks, Jim. Yeah. Jim, do you have a fire alarm set?
Yep, we've had our ongoing instructions, so now we're just getting to the final stages. Mike's a good builder.
I would just like to add, when you were asking about.
This is going down, we're going down.
We even have a dedicated area for medical. So, once medical is open, we have, it's very designated for that. So, that is fully in the ground, you know? I don't know what you think.
I remember, yeah, we did the whole community agreement. It was more about the timing, but it makes sense that the recreational part was supported.
Just because it's easy to deal with, you know?
It's great if you can be the other way. It's great.
It should be the other way.
I totally agree with you.
I totally agree with you too. It makes absolutely no sense. Tell the commission, why are they here?
I just like them forever. I think I remember you at that real high school.
I, yes, at high school too, we were playing with zoning. I've been in and out of this town for once connection for years.
At least two years.
It's been years, yeah.
It's been years, maybe, huh?
I've been, we did special, we did a town meeting for zoning. I've been in front of a slide a whole bunch of times, you know, planning board, special permit, zoning board as well, we got psych that, I mean, everything. No jam, you know, a bunch of times, so, yeah. I'm excited. I'm excited too.
My wife and I, we jumped in and they. So, we started this, we made from the rock crew stuff. We started this, we kept in line, it's still part of it. And, you know, the guy we know is here. And from May to now, I mean, I threw that place upside down and upside down. And the building was a disaster, you know? I need to have a disaster.
I told you, guys.
We're viable, purchased the building, we're keeping the building. We own our property, so I wanted to be what I would keep for myself and that's not for my family. So, it's been a lot of work, day and night. We're excited to open up. We really are excited to be in the town.
Yeah, you guys want to take a look up there?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to take a look. The question I had was, I don't know if the board members or somebody could help me out. If when Todd goes out and does his inspection, would it be temporary until the commission gives the final approval? A temporary CBO or temporary approval from you? So, what we thought is, if you wanted to approve the Board of Health permit condition on the final approval from the Cannabis Control Commission, that would work great for us. And look, everything is conditioned. I'm at approval anyway. What are we going to do, something cannabis about them giving us the authority? So, yeah, so, condition of the certificate of occupancy and the final license from the Cannabis Control Commission, then we could feel comfortable if we have this piece done, and all we got to do is provide you guys with the CBO and the license from the commission. That was what we thought was appropriate.
And it's pretty much done, given, seeing the, getting the CEO before they say anything.
I'm sorry?
They have a certificate of occupancy.
Yes, they will not even schedule the meeting. So, we got to get the CBO, then I can schedule with that. Frankly, if I know the CBO is coming next week, I'm going to send an email, say two, three, four, same, and hopefully, they can move it forward a little faster. But you got the CBO, then the schedule of the meeting, then they'll come out, you know, a few weeks later, or maybe do it virtually, depending on what's going on with COVID. You know, and then we get on, hopefully, the next commission agenda, and then, you know, where we fall. They only meet once a month, so that doesn't help anything either, you know? Yeah.
What's our rule as far as inspection?
I think we have three a year according to our rep, four a year according to our.
Yeah, I don't have to write. Yeah, there's like a flat fee, and then if you fail something, then you got, you know, a little bit more inspection, yeah. Four, 12 inspections a year. Look, you guys cut out a lot more than that. I think Mike's going to be pretty proud of what he built. And any stayover in the town is welcome to visit and get a tour, you know? We sign in, just put a little egg around that, and we escort you around the facility, you know? So, that's welcome anytime.
And then, this one could be the first one. Obviously, I'm on the floor. But it's a year anyways, so. Okay. Our timeframe is, we're looking to schedule a meeting in November. That's the next agenda, right? So, I don't know when we will be able to.
If I have a floor for medical? So, they filed for two applications. One is adult use and the other one is medical. So, the permit we're about to issue is valid through December 31st of 2021. Doesn't sound like you need the medical this year.
No. And it's a good chance you don't need this one standard anyway.
No, I understand that, but you won't be, just give back the $500 and scratch the medical now, and when you are ready, we can do it then. Because otherwise, if they give you a permit till December 31st, and you're not going to be ready for medical, so.
See, I'm not going to be ready by December 31st.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So, would you rather withdraw that request?
Yeah.
It's up to you.
As long as that goes and things are in, you're coming back, it's not enough that cost is over.
Well, I mean, this is, with you guys, it's fairly simple process. You know, it's the same, it's the same simple forms. It's 500 bucks. You know, Mike is, Mike is, he's the best person to work for. He's the best boss, he does a super tight badge, and nothing doesn't get done, ever, right? So, if you want to have this permit in your pocket for the sake of 500 bucks, then, you know, that's up to you, you know?
Yeah, well, that'll be the one. Let's, let's, I'll pay the way.
All right, so they filed for two permits. Required with the application is a check of $500 issued, which we have, a copy of the security plan approved by the police department, which we now have, a copy of the Cannabis Control Commission rule, which obviously we don't. Ornaments Comp affidavit we have, certificate of liability we have, Building Department, certificate of inspection, we don't have yet, obviously. And tax status application by the tax court. So, we have everything, but the other two documents, we can't have until they're done. Obviously, this is like any other building, if you're going to put any retail store in it, I can sign off on the CEO of the occupancy from the building, they just can't start selling anything until they have this permit, so. But every area of issuing it pending.
Conjunction approval.
And obviously, the, you know, control commission's approval. You can't get that without this.
Yeah, exactly.
I concur.
I know, I got a police fire. Any concerns on your end, Jim? And on the town administration side?
No, we're excited.
Now, we could make that motion. What were the conditions of that?
Make the motion that adult use and medical permits are issued for, again, the remainder of this year, so December 31st, 2021. Pending approval from the Building Department for the occupancy permit and Cannabis Control Commission's.
Final license. Second. Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion available? Okay, Steve?
Correct.
Yes.
I just wanted to reiterate what I had told you before the meeting started was, it was a few years, so it was a long road. I noticed immediately the progress when you had entered the equation, things started really looping. So, I just wanted to thank you for choosing our town. It means a lot. As I told you before, we don't have a lot of commercial business, but we have made, my former colleague, selectman Buhart and I have tried to make a sincere effort to bring business to town, so it really means a lot, and I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you. Who else, sir?
Okay.
Welcome, Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Kanas.
Aye.
Mr. Fires, and also, congratulations.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck. Be up for torture.
Yeah, I'm up for torture tonight.
As you like. Is that all, Dave? We're getting five, something, I'm out there, my son is on the X-ray.
Yep.
He's adjusting. Everyone hears like kidding, you know? It looks like it's like brother.
You were a slight ox, right? I think. Thank you very much.
Ask if we have any capital outlay requests? Good luck.
Thanks, Jim.
I see it, I see it. All right. That's our number one. Any more?
Yeah, I can forebe, you know, you discussed that, yeah, Board of Health, capital, outline, outlaying requests. I don't know if we've given this any thought. I have a few editor's statements, a couple of items that I think we should consider. At least one for sure, which is a car, a vehicle, for the health agent, which probably could be shared with the building commissioner if he so wanted to drive it.
I know with the special, I mean, all you proved one. I know it was very specific, and it's caused trouble because we, the town, can't get one.
It has.
Oh, wow.
So, we have a revised article on the agenda for this town meeting. I think it was supported by the Selecting last night, correct? Yes. Okay. So, we have an article revision to allow us to buy a different vehicle.
Okay.
Hopefully, one that's available and with the slight increase in funds because that vehicle is more expensive than the one that was slated for the last article. So, if that's in the affirmative at the town meeting and there's a vehicle available for purchase, then we will have a new vehicle shortly after the town meeting.
Does it have less than 200,000 miles?
It will run you.
It's only got 143,000.
Yeah, exactly.
About 200,000.
And is it for our share? Yeah, it's, it's, it's a vehicle that was under my department, but we said we'll share with the health.
He wants me to drive him around, is what he's trying to say. He was inspection services, how it was listed.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, listen, that I'm thinking about, again, when this is still. Why do they want this back?
Yeah, let's remember.
I think it's November, November 18th.
Okay.
The next five fiscal quarters.
If our office and the health agent do not get any more hours, I'd like to request a part-time office clerk.
Is that capital?
It's not capital. It's not capital.
Not capital?
No.
Oh, personal.
It's a regular budget process. When I look at the capital, any serious improvements that we have to put on the management station?
That's right.
Yeah, I'm looking. The condition of that share out like that.
Yeah.
How is it?
It's, it's rough. It's okay, but it's not going to be, I don't know if it's going to last another five years, so.
That's a good point.
Yeah. I mean, and really, in general, anything up there, I mean, I know we're trying to find some funds for, you know, a new container or repair to the containers, things like that. You know, and those are little bigger purchases that maybe should be thought about on the capital, but certainly that shed, I mean, you know, make a little more, especially again, light of corals, things like that, you know? Have to be a little more aware of personal space. I mean, I go up there and I go and talk to Tim, and we're closer than we are here, and there's no room to get any further apart, you know? It's small, it's tough, you know? Right now, I check on my lap, you know, something a little more, if has to be replaced, something maybe a little bigger, that is more conducive to conducting business. I don't know, put something, sorry, something's on your left, Tim.
No, no, that's fine. That's actually a great point to make. We had a co-financial team meeting today, and.
Which Jim is a member of.
Wait. With, oh, shit. With, with a capital proposal like that, there's a good chance that we can have that paid through Opera funding. And when the capital requests are sent to the town administrator's office, there's going to be emphasis put on where the funding sources are. And certainly, if Opera, or it's conceivable that Opera would pay for, then it's actually an improvement or a capital expenditure that could actually be fully realized in the short term. So, the fact that you learned it in the way you did, which is appropriate, I think would be beneficial with your request, that you include that in our legislature so that when it's reviewed, we can actually apply the Opera funding as a potential funding source. That's all with the rubric that we're using for the capital expenditures. The funding is a major player because without funding, or if we have to go to the taxpayers for funding, it moves further and further down the list. So, you know, alternative funding sources certainly will, the capital project higher on the list than the rubric we're using, so. Better, ready?
Yeah. Anything else, what do we know?
I have to go up and look at the management station target, Tim. I gotta go to the side again, but if I can, and it's not too crowded, I can maybe grab them for a couple minutes and see if there's anything, if there's a lot of stuff that all the time, and if there's things that we see that need serious improvements.
Yeah, that's a good point, definitely.
Or anything in addition to. Or anything in addition to, maybe we need a different type of container, because, I don't know, you know? But instead of trying to use little tidbits of remainder of budgets, or our grant funds that graciously the DEPs allowed us to, they've expanded it to be able to use it for things like buying a container, but the expense of it, it's just going up and up, and we have to save three years' worth, two years' worth of grant money just to refer to container. So they can, they can use for all the things that it's supposed to use for, more appropriately.
So you're gonna volunteer to work there, eh?
Yeah, two weeks. I have two weeks.
A little more than that.
Two and a half.
You gotta stick on the executive sessions, though.
This is one of my letters.
And as long as we're gonna put a shed up there, um, one of the points that we can get for the RDP grant is if we have a swap shed. And I don't know whether the one you guys have with those, but to have like, say, a bigger shed with a portion for the office and a portion for the swap shed, might not be a bad idea, it gets us more RDP points, so, which gets us more grant money.
As long as it's monitored, it can be, eh?
Yeah. Well, it's fine, we talked about like a book bin or like clothing bin up there, because we can monitor it, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, I need to think about that, yeah. That's all I got.
So you'll get that done in two weeks?
I'll talk to Tim. Can I go with it?
All right. Oh, I have a couple items I'd like to request, if the board's done their request. So when you go talk to Tim, a lot of things that he would like, and I know he would like it, uh, is one of those point-of-service machines. When you go and say, one mattress, one box spring, just punch it on the computer, swipe credit card, and we're done. And then we get to track how many mattresses and box springs are coming in, and it automatically does our turn-ins. We spend a lot of time doing turn-ins every week, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Actually, I, um, I don't remember the name of the company. As was Sweden and Hanson, we had a serious amount of, like, grant money left, and we could use that to purchase one of those. The machine itself cost, I wanna say at the time, kind of 11,000 dollars. Um, but we looked down on our side, didn't take anything of transportation, they had come to the boardroom.
No.
And had a big hidden check, we had to go to the transfer practice, it was just very cumbersome. If you couldn't make it to the office during the week to get your trip ticket to bring anything but your regular trash, you could do nothing with it. So this little kiosk thing, you could put outside, you had to swipe credit card, you had your trip ticket, you could go at two in the morning on Friday if you wanted, it didn't matter. And it makes things a lot easier, and same thing, it, it tracked everything, the tunnel, I mean, it was just easy. So they do it exists.
Yeah, we know they exist, but it was a matter of if we're gonna put in for five, over five years, I think some type of, whether it's kiosk or handheld or whatever it may be, I think this needs to be something that we should consider.
Did you research it for a while?
Race wise? Yeah, I haven't had a lot of free time lately.
I guess the, the kiosk did what? There were different models, one you could get, you could put out the transportation, then not have internet, or cellular, cellular data. Um, one, now, before, it's a little bit cheaper, I think, because you could just plug right into the, where your internet, um. I want us to click 10,000.
And, and the technology's come a long way, too, and a lot of young people now have a, a craft fair, can take it with their phone, they can take credit cards, you know? So the technology is way different. But I like that.
Is there any other things we're talking about, gonna be open fire, Sam?
That definitely would be.
So what?
That kiosk thing, that, whatever you wanna call it, would be, uh, the new chair or office, I recall.
We'd need electricity and stuff like that, so it would definitely, and internet, so it definitely would be a problem.
I think we've got time for our next meeting to get some figures together and make a decision on to the 5,000, it's running to this, and why not over 5,000?
You can't go to over 5,000.
Yeah, so. Those of you that have volunteered to research these things.
As a way to know.
If we can guess the prices. And, uh, we go from there.
I have another right on my plate.
What?
Um, it's come to light, as we've trounced our way through COVID here, that the board of health office does not have any privacy. Um, any conversation we have is open, we now have, we finally got a phone in the conference room. Um, until we do some of the calls and mail, but we can't have people calling back their number for the conference room, because everybody gets redited on their phone. And it's going to the conference room, we're not in the conference room, so it would be nice if we had privacy on our side of the counter, no offense. So, to those on the other side of the counter, that is. But I think we need, I mean, Shine had the room for their privacy in the veterans, because some of the stuff they're dealing with is confidential. I think we have a need for some confidentiality in our office.
And the conference room is not satisfying those requirements?
Well, because that's what it was built for.
No, I know, it's okay, it's just when we're calling out all the outgoing calls, and we can't have them call back, that means we're not there, we're at the other line. So I must be able to forward that line maybe, or whatever, it's just, obviously, we were taking over the conference room, too, for content tracing, which wasn't necessarily ideal for.
Probably we cheated, we broke on the phone.
I do, but.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, have a portable phone, fire station do, can they do a portable phone and shoot a line slot, right? We may not be validating if you're looking to files or something, you know?
Um, we have a portable phone, it lasted for a couple months before it died, and I haven't had a phone since January. So we'll be still sharing a phone again, we've been sharing a phone. Out of the four years I've been here, it's been two months that we had our own, almost, so.
So I, I think that's a pretty easy solution, we're not gonna reinvent the, the low level of Old Town Hall, so if we need to work on the phone system, then that's the town administrator or selectman, uh, question. And, and I think you should call people from that phone number, and then if they return the call, you can take the phone and go into the conference room.
Well, that's what we were doing when I had a portable, the ones that died.
Yeah.
We, we had to switch to using the conference.
You know how easy to just fix the phone, at this point.
Well, apparently.
And if you need phones, you should just get a phone.
Well, they gave us a new base, and it wasn't syncing, and Karen reached out to Comcast or whatever, and I, I don't know. So we just didn't go in for them, warming up, because complaining wasn't getting us a new phone, so.
Might as well share a phone. Guys, you gotta get some phones for you. This is so simple. I don't know anywhere, where you share a phone.
It's not.
You have to have.
Yeah.
We have phones, right? We, we.
Fireball.
So, who, 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 what did we ask to get the phone back?
In January? Never asked to do it? Oh, no, we have multiple times.
She's been trying to fix it, it's, it's just not, every time.
Is it hardware issue, the software issue, is that?
Think she's got it fixed, I don't know.
At least the attempt, all right.
At least the attempt, and they are.
So let's just try to finalize that and then work on, because it's easy to fix a phone and put up a wall. Yeah, the wall seems a little bit extreme, but we can fix the phone.
Why not put a wall up?
I'm telling you right now, there's no walls going up. No more walls. All right, well, how do we get the phone up? We just have to put it in the hands of somebody a little bit higher up the food chain, so that my pal was here to, uh, help us move along, the issue with the phones, I, I.
I'm sure we can afford a phone.
Yeah.
So I don't, so I don't think it's just phones.
It's not.
So, so, I, I don't wanna leave this, but Mrs. Brady is very responsive, so it must be a concern. Or we have internet-based phones, so there must be a communication issue between the internet and the cordless phone. But you have to have a phone manufacturer out there that interfaces with an internet-based phone system. That's probably the disconnect.
I think it's when she calls it's in, they, they tell her, oh, just do this, and then she tells us, and we do it, and nothing happens, and I, so.
Yeah, they should.
Well, there's a cordless one, they're gonna.
Well, that one, we love the cordless one, because we knew whenever that one rang, it was somebody calling for COVID, and it was perfect. He just picked it up and went to the other room, and now all the files were in the other room, and so it was easier for us. Now we gotta keep them in different places, and it's just much more. But it's not just COVID, we have a lot of other phone calls that are.
So that was.
I'll follow up on me, if you remind me. I'm not here, I'm here.
I have a meeting with Mike Martin Friday, I mentioned again.
Okay.
Have Cameron reach out first thing.
Okay, thank you.
It's interesting, Comcast is coming.
I think that's where it was left.
You showed town, there's some, not money for the services. Send a tech out to, where are the phones?
They'll come to your house if you complain enough.
Right.
Been there, done that.
Likewise.
And the, the town's got time to think. It's not a matter of where you come, it's we want somebody out here, give it a read.
No, Verizon does, they tell me they have trouble at the police station, they were there before, I think we ran up the phone. So that's all I got.
Okay. So they, you, those that have volunteered to, uh, research those colliders, get in as soon as possible, and we'll. We'll talk on our next meeting, I think we still have time.
Do the 18th, you can?
November 18th.
Thursday.
We got to make it, yeah. Okay. We're gonna move on. We scheduled November Board of Health meeting, because it's better than today. Our meeting was on the 11th, obviously.
Yes, it would have been on Thursday, the 11th.
Can we do Thursday, the 25th?
That's Thanksgiving, no. I want that Thanksgiving.
Really big thanks for letting me.
Yeah.
Right on, Thanksgiving, so, yeah.
Hey, I can't do the fourth, because I'll be, I'll be there.
So I guess we're working at the 18th?
But that's when I think it's, it's a closer business thing.
Well, it's only due to give to Mike, isn't it? He never reads it that long, why should we?
I don't know, let's see.
All departments to have them by 3:00, remember 18, but we can get it to them by 10:00 P.M.
Just, I just, just check with Mike and just say, hey, you know, of course, you know, we, we have two, two ideas, we're just putting this forward, just get it to you, the night of the 18th.
Sounds good, okay.
Give it to the board.
If he says no, do we have a backup?
Well.
Of course.
Special meeting, and we, we could, we could make a motion tonight to do this. Uh, contingent upon being over 5,000 dollars.
So the amount's to be determined by the chairman or whatever, the people doing the research?
Yeah, yeah.
Could do it that way.
Yeah, well, yeah, once we get the information, we can just submit it with no further votes needed.
But you see, we're looking for any other additional stuff at the town.
Yeah, not, not, no.
If after talking to Tim, you realize something like, oh, yeah, we should set aside someone to, whatever you come up with, we should, should give you a price.
Yes, uh, so why don't we something happen? Well, okay, we can do that, too, or we can zoom in. Um, so, evening, yeah, okay. Okay, so next meeting, 18th, maybe?
That works, 18th works, man.
That worked for you, he won't be here. He's gonna be here.
Can't reconsider?
Nope.
At the end of the year? Like me.
I'm gonna push you, fiscal or?
Fiscal, yeah, just finish it.
You gotta be here till the 18th, please.
You gotta stay to the executive session.
Can't do it, or is it?
I can do it.
The board hasn't accepted anything from you yet, so.
Yeah, I wish you knew that.
And are we doing 6:00 P.M.? Oh, no, it doesn't matter, 6:00 P.M., 5:00, what are you doing? I gotta let, oh, cable can't come before 6:00.
Yeah, it's 12:00.
6?
6.
Or 5?
6, cable can't be here before 6:00.
Okay, 6.
Is that a motion?
Yes, is there a motion, so we schedule the, uh, board talk waiting to November 18th, to Veterans Day, on our meeting day.
So.
Second. Okay, motion made in second, all failure of moving to November 18th as our next meeting. Uh, Mr. Burnout, aye? Mr. Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Fires is also, and aye, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I want to move to table, next item on a new business review, discussing act subject definition and construction to a future meeting pending, uh, feedback from RDP.
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah, we should, yeah.
Now, I'll shoot, I'll shoot, the D.P., you know, Brett Roman, just go and email next property. Oppose the situation and say, what would you, you know, how, how, how do you interpret the construction?
And it gives them enough time, because it's all, yeah, just keep pushing.
Do you know how?
That's a good point. Yeah, I know.
Then ask what we have discussed.
I'll second that.
Okay. Maybe second to table, item 4D, uh, maybe better discussion?
No discussion on motion to table.
Oh, that's right.
Dude, you keep discussing it.
Just call the table.
Mr. Burnout, aye? Mr. Tennis? Been a long tour evening.
Tennis, proceed for the list.
And Mr. Fires also is a fan.
Hey, I agree a lot with Mr. Fire.
Thank you. Okay, should also probably since this is gonna take some time. Uh, item 4D, review discussing act resident handbook, what to expect when installing, repairing, upgrading a subject system. And I'm thinking that we should have a, a workshop to accomplish these things we've been looking forward to, to do the, the new self-local subject regs that were presented, the bodya regs that we're working on. Uh, so now these two things here, so, and including I have a workshop, I think we should get these things accomplished. I hope you can make, you can volunteer to come in if you want.
Okay. Uh, I know, I know other town, I'll tell me, I can, but other towns that have a similar in book for a subject system and what to expect and how to proceed and things like that, so, might be able to find, you know, pull a couple, use as a template and then modify that, but that way, uh.
Oh, yeah, do you know the towns? Yeah, hold on, hold on.
I did some, yeah, I Google some towns, and there are some, uh, similar, it's not a book, like, could I say? But it's, it's guidelines and how to proceed with it, so.
Give it a good space, and then we can work off of that, for one area specifically.
On, on the 18th, could we do, um, 5 o'clock and right after that, we'll go into our meeting?
Workshop then meeting?
Yeah, because we, we, we always say we're gonna do it, but is, is always the scheduling in conflict?
That's a good idea.
The night of a meeting works best. I'd rather do it before, huh?
Let's look at, we finish it at night. I would rather not. But I, I, I don't want people to have to wait that are coming into the meeting.
You just go 6:00 and we can start.
Yeah, we go until 6:00.
Just make it 5:00 to 6:00.
5:00 to 6:00.
You're telling the army, you're telling the army.
What, the meeting or the workshop?
A workshop from 5:00 to 6:00, and then we roll into the meeting.
I thought you couldn't make 5:00.
Cable.
Cable can't make 5:00.
Oh, but you can.
Yeah.
I'll make your point to, oh, good, okay, so let's do that, I mean, 18th, we'll do a workshop.
Is that a motion?
I, well, I'm just saying, I'm waiting for somebody to make the motion.
Chairman, I make a motion that we, uh, schedule a workshop for the resident, resident handbook on, of what to expect when installing, repairing, and upgrading a subject system. And also to, uh, if time permits, work on some tobacco and, or, and, uh, what?
Bodya.
Bodya regulations, if time permits.
Second.
Yeah, but you should do construction.
And definition of construction.
There's another, there's four of them. Isn't it?
Tobacco and bodya.
It's actually five, bodya, tobacco, the handbook, definition of new construction, exactly.
Tobacco, yeah.
Well, it's only now that I'm.
We could, we could put them all on there, let's put them all on there, if we get to the primary one.
It's just be a revolving one all the time.
But the resident handbook is first. But the resident handbook is first.
Is there a section in the handbook that the board of selectmen did that deals with what to help things?
That is.
Business.
That was all probably from various regulations, existing regulations.
It doesn't include what permits you needed. It wasn't how to go from point A to point B.
And it gave a lot of references to, uh, state of ours and.
Yeah. Same as you know, you actually deal with.
Uh, it didn't, it didn't really break it down to a citizen booklet where it keeps it simple. You know, people would have a bit understanding of, and that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to make it easy for people to be able to comprehend the process, so.
So reminder, going forward, the definition new construction, we'd be putting to our local Title V regulations that would have to be full hearing advertised.
Yeah.
The engineers install it, often notified, support. So I would say if there are any other changes, same Title V breaks, that they'd be done at the same time.
As far as that definition, I guess if you strictly adhere to the language that exists in Title V, but now, you know, you can get out, but it seems, and again, I'm not a Title V person, but seems to me there's a lot of different variables and opinions that have an effect on whether it's new construction or not, whereby if you only went by the definition in front of you, it's pretty straightforward. But it seems a lot of that has.
But even then, they can come up with a definition, and then a different kind of scenario comes in, and you say, wow, I didn't even think of that, and then you, that's what it's good to bring in front of the board. There's always, uh, different interpretations of it.
A lot of a couple bizarre, I mean, look at it, um, retention of public records. You only have to keep a food inspection report legally until you have a new one. And then it gets replaced in the Title V report. However, per Title V, that retention, it, the retention law is immediately revert, revert back to Title V, so a disposal works installer's permit, so the installers, their license for the year, the permit, according to Title V, you have to keep indefinitely. But even if they get a new one following your, it, it's, I mean, why that's like, that, that's so bizarre to me when you don't have to do that for pumpers or followers or, but it's, there's some funky things in Title V that just are weird.
I think it follows the bottom.
It follows the property, and you kind of.
Right.
It's strictly because of the potential litigation that can come up, and during a public records request and discovery, if they installed a system in, they wanna make sure that they were licensed during the year that the system went in.
Right, so they installed, so the license is supposed to stay with the record, but we were, we were going back and saying, well, what if someone pulled an installer's permit but didn't install any systems that year? Do we have to keep that? And the answer we got was yes. They didn't go to work in town.
Because they may have installed without permit, that's why. So, yeah, I, I, I get it, because it's convoluted. The only thing I'll say about this is I wanna make sure that whatever the board comes up with doesn't conflict with what my new construction, uh, definition.
Well, that's why you don't have to show me this.
I know, and that's why I brought paperwork, so.
Okay.
I encourage the discussion that comes up.
Sorry, our goal is to have everybody in the right.
Okay. So, so we'll do that at the workshop, the day of the workshop?
Yeah, the 18th from 5:00 to 6:00. See as much as we can get done.
Perfect.
I kind of like to do that first.
We should, you know, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh.
Okay.
We'll get as much of it done as we can in the hour, and, uh.
Sure.
Say. Voice.
Did we, did we vote, we?
No.
Yeah, we did. Then what, the table, uh?
We need to pick an actual pool.
Pretty neat, huh?
We have motion second, we're getting a table.
Yeah, to have a, to do the workshop, by the same.
Okay.
So we just need a vote.
We take it for you, right?
Wait, you guys have a motion? I have a motion, Kevin Bernardo.
Yeah, we, and final vote.
Take a final vote.
David Rova.
Rova.
Mr. Bernardo? Aye. Mr. Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Fires also. I have a doubt. Any other items not reasonably anticipated by the chair, $48 in advance.
Would nurse one follow up with us?
Oh, I think, uh, the public can.
I, I think I'll do it here.
I don't want to throw a name out yet until we contacted people, but we are on the process of hiring nurses. We did interview three of them. We have a candidate, and, and due respect to everybody, you know, not that it means the name yet, but, so, um, just on this, uh. Oh, I think we will, uh.
No, so, so the issue is, is this board has to make the recommendations to the selectmen, so.
So I'll be doing it.
And now we have any name, we're gonna have to have a special meeting in order to make the recommendation.
We can have a Zoom meeting or something.
We could just zoom that one too.
Yeah, if, if we're making an actual appointment.
Yeah.
For an appointment that should be on, as actual business, not.
Posted, yeah, posted meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, anyone can attend.
Are you going to interview this candidate publicly?
For me.
Are you going to interview your candidate publicly?
No, we did that a second ago.
Publicly?
No.
No. When you start out, you have finalists, all right? If you have 10 applications, you decide down to, let's say, three. You interview them in executive session. When you come up with the one you're gonna recommend, you gotta do it in open session, like we did with the person that was hired by the board assessors. It's a public meeting, a posted meeting.
We only asked for candidates.
It doesn't matter, you know, we had, what, I think we interviewed two?
When, when we go to move forward with making a recommendation for appointment, we have that posted.
I would suggest you talk to Mike Mull, because we had.
He was there with us.
All right, that's for the initial screening. That's not a problem.
Yeah, that's all we did.
All right, I'm saying to you, you said you have a candidate. Somebody you're gonna recommend.
Yes.
All right, that should be done in open session. If you do it in the joint meeting.
Oh, yeah, we can, we'll do it in open session.
Let's say, we're the plan of our meeting.
We, but, could I, could you do a joint meeting with us, and then do your interview, and then we'll approve it? Bye-bye.
Yeah, had it been on the agenda tonight for us to program it, that was sort of our plan to recommend to this board.
Do a joint meeting, do your interview.
This, this, but expedite it a little faster than we're having to do a special meeting just for that.
We had a, the board of assessors, uh, did the joint meeting, and.
With board swap?
Yes.
Oh, that's a good idea.
The, the screening was done with, um, Carol and Mike. Because to bring another assessor in, we got a forum, and it's a problem. So they, they did it, they came up with, uh, the two candidates to be interviewed, and, yeah, we did it that way.
There were four of us, right? Uh, one was a former town nurse.
You shouldn't, you shouldn't be discussing this. It's not on the agenda.
Yeah, right, yeah, this is true.
Right.
Well, well.
A lot to say to you, as you, from that point, if you think back, when we hired the police, the fire chief, we had a whole bunch of applicants, the board of selectmen screened it down to two. Those two appeared at the board of selectmen's meeting. Individually, they were interviewed, so candidate A doesn't know what candidate B vice versa said. They were not in the same room together, but we did it in the meeting hall next door. So the first one came in, interviewed that person, that person had to go up. And then the second one came in, then we brought them both in, because we were not gonna take it under advisement, we made the vote that night, okay? So when you get down to the finalists, there's a public, open component that has to take place. That's all I'm saying. If you got it down to look at it, the joint meeting is, uh, is the way to do it.
Excellent. Good idea.
Slack. So just for logistics, Slack can just vet they're not meeting again for two weeks. So does that mean you're gonna have a special, and then have the Slackman vote that night? Or are you gonna have a meeting on the same night as the Slackman? Because I know this nursing is important, so I can work that out.
Could we have a meeting just to recommend, and then they have it at the normal meeting?
You have a special meeting, just like we had tonight. We can do a joint.
It'd be very quick. I just, I don't wanna have to sit and wait another two weeks to get a nurse going.
What I'm saying is, like, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah. Uh, the earliest we could have one is, uh, Wednesday coming?
And, uh, in town next Wednesday.
There is a coming? When that is, uh?
It's just the three of you that you need, it's not.
20.
It's just the majority of what you need.
Yeah.
You need two, it's two. Same with the selecting, you need at least two.
We meet next Wednesday?
No, we met yesterday.
I may enjoy it.
That's right, I was saying.
But, I mean.
Yeah, whatever works for everybody, it doesn't.
You can do as fast as 48 hours posting, because that's what's.
So.
Can be done.
I have the schedule.
Got a schedule for us.
Aye. Uh, next Thursday, the 21st, is 5:30 P.M. Capitol Outlay Meeting here, and 7:00 P.M. Conservation Meeting here. So that limits the availability of the space, so even if surprise. That's, that's up to you. And up to.
I mean, I don't, I can't speak to the others today, but I'll be here.
I would probably not be back for five, but as long as.
As long as it's all us.
That has to be fine, that has to be fine though.
When I can join B Zoom.
You know what?
Yeah, very complicated.
Yeah, this general reason is, uh. This, this building is chalk solid for the rest of the month, so, I mean, not, you don't have to meet here, but I'm just telling you.
Yeah.
Uh, I can't.
Can we? No, I don't see, I believe that all the selectmen should be available somewhere on 5, isn't it?
5 is a little close for Brett, because he works in Boston, but I don't know, the scheduling might be working from home that day.
Yeah, I have a training.
From home will be a problem, and I won't be from home.
Well, there'll be two of you also, the two of us, so that's a majority.
Can we just do a, can we just do a, so I have a training until 5:30 every day next week?
And I'm not, I'm not.
Eleven to 5:30 a day.
Zoom.
You can do it Zoom.
I can do a Zoom later on, yeah. Like a 6 o'clock Zoom. Same, it's the same thing as a meeting, right?
Oh, it happened here, but you have it at 6:00, someday, I'll go in.
Dude, that's just a common thing.
No, that's true.
Thanks for allowing me here, I didn't have to be here, but I'm just letting you know.
I don't know, we'll figure it out, because it's already.
The candidates get present too.
Yeah.
But that could be a Zoom.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get her.
Say, uh, how about next Thursday at 6:00, is it?
Yeah.
Uh, is that joint with the selectmen? Is that what we're talking about?
I can't speak for them.
Can we, can we?
Making sure it's okay with.
Or are you gonna have it regardless of whether or not they're doing a joint meeting? You know what I'm saying? Are you still gonna do it?
I'm gonna speed you on my own, too, while you're, you're wrecking.
I know. So next Thursday.
Well, I only say that because I'm not here. You're usually the one that sets up and starts the Zoom meetings and all that, so.
Not yet, doesn't.
I'm gone next week on vacation.
But the Karen can set it up.
I'm asking if it's joint with the selectmen, because if she's not here, she's not making much.
Yeah, Karen, Karen, we did it.
I think we, we can, is not a violation of the open meeting law to schedule a meeting. So I think we should probably work on the specifics of time and date, uh, on Monday.
Yeah, because it's a special meeting.
Reach, I mean, ultimately, reach out to the, the, the person, Karen, at first, to make sure they're available.
Yeah, that'd be possible.
You know?
You don't forget, this brain is 73 years old. It's, uh, it's a little rough.
Top that.
My mind, so.
Oh, she will drown, thank you.
So close.
Well, she's amazing, she's an exception.
Uh, so a few quick things.
I can help. Is it an outfit that does some forget stuff?
Yep.
There are days I feel like one, quite frankly.
Uh, so West Nile virus, we haven't had any changes since the last meeting. Um, contact tracing, uh, we've been doing it, and it's slow and steady, and we're seeing a lot of kids with a lot of parents. Um, I don't think anyone wants me to go into any more than that, but, um, we got a lot of school events that are starting to pop up and other events, and there's some discussion about the mask school, because Desi says you gotta wear masks when you're in school. So if you're having voice governing at the school, after hours of school, you need to wear masks. Um, DPH is saying that yes, masks are required whenever you're in a school, but we haven't gotten that ready to be able to turn that one out. We also have another site, which I'm not gonna mention the address, because it's not on the agenda, that, um, we had issued a help order, and they haven't responded, so we were looking to take the next step, but, um, Mike Mull on TA is asking that we just do some kind of eviction notice or something that we were basically throwing them out of house to avoid having to get the lawyer involved to, to go to court over, but I'm like, so it seemed weird, but I just wanted to throw it out.
Eviction notice?
You would do that.
And notice to.
Notice to vacate.
Vacate, that's the one, sorry. Notice to vacate. And you want the board to do that, and stuff.
I think that's gonna warrant some discussion, I think that must be on the agenda for.
Well, that's why I didn't mention the addresses, because of this.
The owner occupied or the tenant?
Own.
Okay.
I don't think that will ever happen.
There you go.
All right, we'll have to put that.
We'll put it on any more specifics.
I don't know what you're talking about, so.
Yeah, I can't do all the, like.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, and last thing is, I'm on vacation next week, so I'm not around to do any inspections. I've phoned out an email of any of you who are gonna be around to do any inspections. Right now, I have a parks running scheduled, but there will be some subjects that have come through, obviously, Mr. Agiar is elder agent, you can do inspections, but obviously, if the board is looking to do them, then it's your prerogative. So we don't have a backup for me right now. I know we get authorized in the, with the budget for this year. Um, it started July 1st, and we just haven't done anything to set up a job script to, uh, to do it.
Do we look like, I'm just wondering maybe if, uh, they needed an inspection, though?
Well, that's what we, we, we have, we've never put anything in place to have a baton, so to speak.
I mean, I could use some help. Like Monday, late afternoon, Tuesday, late afternoon, early evening, and then I'm gone once a Thursday, and then Friday, I can do whatever you need, you know?
Yeah, we don't do subject inspection on Fridays, so, uh, it would only be Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. No, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
I don't mind helping out to keep the ball rolling. I don't think this is a huge workload, right? I mean, I, I know there's stuff going on.
From what I expect, you're, you're gonna have three subjects that will need to be done next week.
I, I'll do what I can, though. I'll, I'm on an open hall, uh.
Yeah, open hall, stone under the tank, you know, my own inspection. I don't expect the final rating to come in, um, next week, so.
Yeah, one of my work schedules next week, if you already docked, if I come out, I'll already get docked, I've already.
6:00 A.M.
6:00 A.M. is docked. Do you want to name what you're.
It's at 6:00 A.M.
See if there's anything in there that.
Yeah, I said I'm on.
You won't be here, but.
In town, Wednesday, Thursday, but, uh, I don't know.
I see how, if it comes up, which it will be available, either man or you.
That's fine. We keep the ball rolling, that's what we do.
There are two that are on the middle of his lane that'll be next, probably Monday, so.
So you're.
Yeah, like two doors apart. Our next door to each other.
About that time.
Um, you have a good meeting. Other than the fact that we're.
No, we're on commission.
No, sir, it's not 3:00.
Thank you, yeah, thanks. No one animals, but, uh, public, anyone?
I got a couple of quick questions, Dan.
Sure?
Yeah.
Sure.
The only question that I have, you, you're gonna work, you've tangled. And I, I'm aware of the confusion that the public has, when we get asked to what is new construction?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I was still...
Yeah. Exactly, I'm just not sure how, this is why he's checking the DDP.
But you have to get them, too, you, you guys will work it out, I'm sure.
We will. That was a non-discussion motion.
Yeah.
Nancy had a couple more, quick, quick question, great answer.
Right, um, the first one, the MMA, look, MMA meeting last week, there was discussion again about the state proposed ban on disposal of mattresses. And, you know, MMA is saying, well, you can't have a ban if there's no place to dispose of them, so that's one issue. But the issue I raised at the meeting that nobody could answer was, when I talk about disposal of a mattress, I automatically think mattress and box spring. So we take mattresses and box springs, correct?
Yes.
All right. What do you do with those new bases that are electric, that you take the mattress off of, and you can throw a mattress on it? But the thing is electric, you know, the adjustable kind, like, like, um, the bigger furniture stores advertise? And what do you do with them?
You pour it in.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lovely item, and in some cases, if it's a steel frame, they would actually go to recycle.
So if somebody in town had something, a mattress, the whole unit they're gonna get rid of, all right? You know about mattresses. So is there a fee set to deal with that, because that's not a box spring? My only thought was, because I couldn't get a straight answer, and, I mean, we had people at that meeting, this was a Zoom meeting, so they're all over the state, all kinds of backgrounds, and nobody could really tell me, what do you do with it? Or how do you, so I, I just mentioned that to you guys, because when you do your...
Can I be separated? There are some parts that I can't.
Like, the, the person took apart the metal box from the box spring, you charge them a box spring, and now just move them.
All I know is, they sell them as units, and I know that as long as that's working, you can replace the mattress, because you just drop that on top. But, um, it's, it's all of this discussion we have about disposal of mattresses, and I raised the issue with this, and I thought, well, I didn't really get an answer, so I'll have to ask somebody in town, what I know, just something to think about, that's all.
Well, we're gonna be reviewing some fees also, uh, because quite a long period, prices are increasing for disposal, and so we have to look at our fees, and that's an item in mind, I think.
I think they got an adjustable base or something like that.
Adjustable base?
Yes.
Uh, bed adjustable bed, I don't know, like I say, I see them advertised on TV all the time.
It's like, it's like, you know, like, piece of furniture.
Okay, well, then the other thing came in, is it an appliance, or is it a piece of furniture? Because it's got the electrical, whatever, but anyhow, I just wanted to mention it to you, um, it hopefully, I'll hear it again at MMA, and somebody will figure it out, because it's something everybody has to deal with, or will be, because these things are popular. My other question was, over the years, and this goes back to when we were, uh, board of health and board of selecting, I had mentioned several times about the number of communities at MMA who issued permits to solid waste haulers, and it was going to be looked at here. And some of them say, this is a good way to control, first of all, the disposal of solid waste by people who contract on their own, and also income for the community. And I'm just wondering, what ever happened to it? Because it's, it's been around, it comes up at MMA quite often, and the I'll say the majority of communities represented at the meeting have this, all right? So if, uh, just like you have to permit installers for septic, somebody who's doing business in your community hauling waste has to get a permit, and there was a fee charge. And, and it's a pretty standard practice for...
I'm glad you're on the house, because I thought we were doing that.
I thought we did, too, and it was, and quite frankly, normally, I mean, I mean, kind of was worth it, we always had a permit solid waste haulers, but that is another point we get on the DDP grant, the second grants, by having regulations that supplement that permit.
And it's another way to get compliance.
Well, well, some of the concerns that were raised at the MMA meeting were, they empty dumpsters. There could be anything in there.
Yeah.
Literally, I mean, it could be hazardous waste, it could be radioactive, whatever. I mean, I mean, even, you know, uh, the, um, litter boxes, if the animal's being treated, could be radioactive, we've had experience with that. These things just get dumped, all right, and it's taken someplace for disposal. And some of the communities were cited for, oh, this truckload of whatever was contaminated with whatever, maybe it was biological waste, who knows? But it was dumped on, dumped, wrong choice of words, it was blamed on the community where it was generated, and yet it wasn't picked up by the public waste hall. It was a private hall, you know, you see the dumpsters packing for a yard, because most people are not going backyard to dump them. So as you ride around, you see these things, and businesses happen, too. But, uh, I was, I was, I was thinking of that, because again, it's come up at MMA, and so, um, looking at permitting with fees, solid waste haulers. I mean, and it could, it could be, I don't know, January to December, or July to June, a time period, and they could come in and pick up, uh, maybe they would be getting the word out, so you don't have, um, you know, somebody just coming in and picking up and disappearing.
I, when I worked in Lincoln, I had some housing issues at where, just say a dumpster was overflowing. I worked a homeowner, I'd say, it's time to get that dumpster out. And they're already not paying the dumpster company, I contacted them, said, why not pick it up until they pay us? And they'd say, well, you have a permit with us, pick it up and square away with them later on, and we'll get that in order. So it was a way to get compliance.
Yeah, that, that was one of the points, not only, yes, it generates some income for the town, but really enforcement, and not only that, if somebody pulls out a load of whatever, and it's either contaminated or radioactive or who name it, they don't know who picked it up and where it came from.
I thought, I thought we had that in place, we should, I should put that on the agenda.
They didn't comment that at the time, it was, it was something that came... They didn't get it, they didn't get it at the time?
I think the thing was, um, this goes back, not, not the first time, not the first time I was on, I brought this up when I came back in fifty. I think the feeling was, oh, it's like another tax, and people are paying taxes to dispose of waste. Well, if they've got a dumpster, they're choosing not to take advantage of what the town has. And that's another concern in communities, that the reason they have them is because you can put anything in there you want. Whereas we have rules and regulations and restrictions, the whole bit. So again, it's an issue of enforcement and control. And so the towns, uh, communities that got burned, being accused of generating who knows what, society, they were gonna crack down.
And, and another thing, you know, we had certain regulations for that, where you couldn't put it, you have to put it ten feet off the road, some people put it right on the legs of the road.
Well, as I said, they're in the backyard.
Causes some nuisance problems, it causes some traffic issues.
No problem.
Yeah, so we would say in our regulations, there has to be ten feet, whatever we want in those regulations. So there's some, uh, uniformity with that.
Well, we can add that to our regulations.
But the thing is, I think we should put it on a meeting, eventually, uh, to discuss that, because I want to we're gonna get some feedback from those, uh...
From the haulers?
From the haulers, but...
But, but, but the thing is, they are a business.
Yeah.
Who come into town to do business, that, that they're being paid for by whoever has the bin on their property, and they're gone, wait a minute, wait a minute, anybody else coming in to do business, like a septic installer or something?
Even a septic hauler, they, they, they work all the time, they can pump.
So that this solid waste issue, and the other thing, too, is, it's a good way also to find out, uh, to track the solid waste truly, how much solid waste is generated in the town a day? Well, we only know because of the numbers for, that we pay for as a community. We don't know anything about all that other thing. And one of the big pushes on right now, of course, is a brand new bottle bin. And they're saying how this is gonna generate all this income, and how it's gonna reduce all of this uh, bottle trash, all this other stuff, uh, which, by the way, I already vote, I'm literally voting no, MMA's gonna support it. Um, and my problem is, is gonna direct, generate fifty, that fifty billion dollars in unclaimed bottle deposits. Tells me that's a flop, okay? That means all those people block that stuff and do, turn it back in, that's a whole other issue. But what I'm saying to you is, if you really wanna talk about your own waste generated in a community, this is another way of doing it, right? But, yeah, I think, I, I think it's well overdue.
I would agree with that.
Oh, so anyhow, put your agenda, I...
I felt strongly for, for a while. Uh, and I think the other board members, too, was, uh, a lot of things should be getting done, and I think we need a solid waste.
Well, the board did vote for that, and we just haven't written a letter to send it over to the selectmen yet.
Oh, oh, right, of course.
Working on it.
I think a solid waste committee is fine, but I think sooner than that, we need to stop talking about having some kind of IOR or other regulation or something, or however you have to do it to get these things permitted, and set the fees for it.
I don't like the part in there, I'll try to explain all the regulations together.
And they're out there, like you say, yeah, they're out there, you can get them and get one, like, and just plug them, plug in the stuff relative to type. Okay.
And yeah, well...
She says stuff.
No, there's only so many hours a day.
I agree.
Yeah.
I'm waiting for that, I was thinking, yeah, um...
I don't...
Especially with the whole lot out there, I can't...
I don't all want those electric bed things, anyhow, but as I say, well, these have come up at MMA repeatedly, and it surprised me, nobody could be really invested in the first one, you know, so I think it's...
It's a great idea, it's a great idea. And it's probably one of those things we put on, on our list.
Oh, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the, the...
No, regulations.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So... Okay. You had nothing, no animals, but, uh, to round out with any, anything else?
Uh, above number seven, approved minutes, August twenty-sixth, September nine. I think I'm watching through the hundred minutes, August twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-one, the answer, time nine, two thousand twenty-one, regular meeting. Second. What's your name, second, to approve the minutes of August twenty-sixth and September nine, two thousand twenty-one, of the regular meeting? Uh, Chairman, I make a motion to table no, we're gonna take a vote on the other two.
Oh, yes, sorry.
Matt, what's our, what's our vote? Uh, Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Janus.
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also a nigh. All right, go ahead, make a motion to table, um, seven C, uh, executive session meeting minutes of September nine, two thousand twenty-one.
Second.
Second, okay, motion to table, second to table, item seven C, to separately do the board of health, executive session meeting minutes of September nine, twenty twenty-one. No discussion, no motion to table. We'll proceed with the vote, Paul, vote, Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Janus.
Aye.
Mr. Pires is also a nigh. Is there anything else, anyone?
No.
They're gone, I'll stop the motion till adjourned.
Second.
Okay, maybe then, second to adjourn. Mr. Bernardo.
Aye.
Mr. Janus.
Aye.
Mr. Pires is a nigh.
All right.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good morning. Uh, Mr. Hall, I don't know, thanks for coming. Seriously.
Thank you.